All right.
You're all set. All right, you're all set. You may have to speak a little bit louder like so the people back here can actually hear you because I'm gonna, but I'm gonna put it on the system in there just for that camera there.
Okay.
I'll be back.
All right, we should go?
Yep.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, our school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 7th. It's a little bit after seven. So I'll start off the meeting today with any public participation. Would anybody like to address the committee? Please come in to the table. See, no one, I'll go on to good news. I'll start off with good news. I'd like to, first of all, welcome the committee back. We did have a workshop in July, but we did not have a school committee meeting in July, so this is our first meeting. Coming back, so I just want to welcome the committee back. Hopefully they have, they're having a great summer. And also welcome Nicole back, even though you are in the middle of your school break. We appreciate you being here. I'd also like to introduce our new superintendent, Kimberly Shaver-Hood. Kimberly started with us August 1st. Her, she came to us from the, I think it's Blackstone-Milville.
Correct.
Yes, Blackstone-Milville School District. We're happy to have her, and I just thought that we would first introduce and just have them say a couple of words.
Thank you very much. I'm thrilled to be here. This is day five. And up until day five, everything has been very exciting, and I know it will continue to be throughout this school year. Just to share a little bit about myself, my education, or education is my passion, and putting students first is my number one priority. Maintaining a safe and secure environment for all is something that we all will be striving to do this year, and creating a very positive and rigorous environment for all students. I look forward to working with the community. I will be sending out a Google link for the community to respond to some questions. I hope that I have many answers and replies. And throughout this school year, I'll be sharing information that I've received with everyone. And I certainly invite you to please contact me with suggestions, thoughts, and input. And thank you very much.
Great to have you here. Next, I want to introduce our new business manager, Michael McMillan. Michael came from the Cape Cod Collaborative Barnston Public School System. He also started with us August 1st. And Michael, if you don't mind just coming up, then just introducing yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm delighted to be here. I'm delighted to have started as a part of the Wareham Public Schools team. This is big for me as well, and I'm thoroughly enjoying it so far. Getting out, you know, as part of my entry plan to meet as many of the key people in the district and in the town side, so I can understand as much as I can at the stage of the Wareham and the, all the good work that's been done here. And I hope to build on the work of my predecessor and the previous superintendent, they've been doing to help deliver efficiency across the district. And helping to ensure that all the resources in the district are focused on delivering services for our students. And so, yeah, I'm just really enjoying being part of the team and looking forward to working with it all.
Thank you very much. Any questions for any of our new administrators?
Have Michael's responsibilities been firmly established, or you're still working on that with him?
There's still a little bit of transition.
Then I'll withhold it.
Anyone else?
I love Mr. McMillan's Portuguese accent.
Hi.
It was currently stated that they started, both of them started August 1st, but I want to commend them again for keeping them running and showing up at our July 29th meeting. It's going above and beyond, and I really appreciate it.
Great, welcome again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other good news from the committee?
I have a piece. It's, uh, I think that we've got to stop highlighting all of the wonderful things that happen in this, in this community. And the kind of community, giving community that it is. I've been around a long time, and I've yet to see a community that is giving as Wareham in so many different ways. And that being said, an awful lot of community involvement and participation comes from my Cape Verdean community. And as a, an alum of the Cape Verdean Festival, they have this thing that's called the Hunter Club. And just the other night, they had their presentations, and they honored eight of our students with scholarships and grant awards. So I'd just like to quickly mention them, Rashawn Gomes, Lariza Cadozo, Morgan Fitzgerald, Kali Gibbs, Stevie Baptiste, Quentin Silveira, Kiana Fontz, and Sammy Pujol. And I think that I want to congratulate these youngsters. They've had a very, very strong academic background. They're furthering their education, and so kudos to the students, and more so continued success for all of the organizations in town that support our young people. And particularly with the Cape Verdean Festival coming up, we hope them a really, really successful festival. And again, I want to thank everyone involved in making this work for these young people.
Thank you. I just have one quick piece. I'm not sure if everyone, hopefully everyone received this, but if folks don't know, Wareham will be celebrating two major milestones in the town history. In June will be the 200th anniversary of the tack on Wareham, Harvard by the British, and in July will be the 275th anniversary of the incorporation of the town. The reason why I mentioned this is, is for two reasons. One is, I hope that the schools for the, have a big part going into these celebrations. It's, it's something that, that has, it's our history. There's a lot of opportunities there, so looking for partnerships going through the celebration going into next year, I think would be, would be great, having all of our students and teachers getting involved. But the other piece that it's going to take to really pull a spectacular celebration together are fundraising opportunities. So I just wanted to mention three dates. One is Sunday, September 15th from 2:00 to 5:00 at Baypoint. They're doing a cabaret starring Linda Calice. The second is a canal cruise on August 26th from 7:00 to 9:00 on Set Pier. And lastly, a psychic fair on Saturday, September 28th from 10:00 till 4:00. All of this, all of these will probably be available on local newspapers to be able to buy tickets, but you also can reach out to Claire Smith. She has a Wareham email address, and she can also let you know about all the information. So I just wanted to mention those.
Great.
Last piece of good news?
I do. If you'll just bear with me, and I hope my technology-
English and History Wing. And for those of you who may not be familiar with the second floor, it's in the front of the building, second floor.
Works. What I've been doing is going through the buildings, and I put together a small slideshow that show, highlights our students that are in school this summer and just some of the great things that are happening.
I just hope I didn't screw that up for you.
Yeah, you might have, but I don't know.
Leave it to Palladino.
There you go.
She's good. Thought she was coming in afterwards.
Mr. Palladino, can you turn the microphone in?
Do you have a pair of pants like that, Cliff?
And so, those are some of the really fun things that I've seen. On Friday, they have the fair or the conning event for the summer care. I know that they're having some things for sale, so if any of you have time, please stop by, they would love to have you.
Were you the photographer?
I was.
Thank you very much. That's great to see what's going on in our schools during the summertime. Any questions? Okay. Next up are the men-
So thank you for having me here. We're here, I was here a year ago for the same request, a different part of our building, and obviously I wouldn't be back here unless it was a great success. Last year, we were able to create a workstation in an area of the building that really served no purpose. It was an area where students could congregate between passing, and it was very tough to supervise. This is what we did last year. We came to you in July, and the construction was done, and this is in, looking out towards the flagpole in the parking lot. The current setup, tried to do the best I could with my pictures, and this is kind of what it looks like. As you walk in to the left, there are four computers, a printer and a phone for those computers, and then there's a photocopier on the right side when you walk in. The photocopier is networked to all of the classrooms in the English and History Wing, and it also has scanning capabilities back to the email, so it's a, it's a great resource for the English and History Department. And the way the school's set up, we have two small workstations downstairs and two upstairs, but to give you a little more information, the way the school's set up, two-thirds of the classroom, classrooms are on the second floor. So there are a lot of teachers in those classrooms, and a lot of teachers that rotate, and if you do, if you are lucky enough to have a classroom, there are teachers that come in during your free period, so it's tough to work in your classroom. So what we have is we created some workstations, and what I'm asking for is to create the same type of wall on the back section of our school's second floor, which is the Math and Science Wing. Unfortunately, they were a little neglected with this, but they're very excited with this proposal, and it would be a similar setup that we have in the English and History Wing. We, so basically, that wall would be covered with a door, and we'd have some computers and photocopy and printer, phone, because the phones in the classroom don't call out to long distance, and as you know, everyone can be reached via cellphone if you have to call, if not by email. We have had great reviews, as I mentioned, from the English and History Department, and as I told Michael yesterday, although when Mr. Shaver-Hood came in this morning, I'm not sure if she realized how mu, how much ink we purchased for the printers, but we have been able to cut back because those, those photocopies are, photocopiers are networked. It allows for us to purchase less ink, so we're hoping next year to even be able to purchase less ink than we did this past year. So it's, not only is it convenient, I think it's economical as well. Certainly entertain any questions you may have.
Questions? Yes.
How much? Is it the same contractor that did the work for you for the wall?
Well, we'd have to put it out to bid, but I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate it going above the $2,500 that it cost us for the area in the front. The big ticket item is the door because it has to be to code. That's really what takes the bulk of that cost.
So without, without this, the teachers have their work area, but it's in the open? Or it's not set up at all?
It's not set up at all. It's an area where students continue to congregate, and it's really just wasted space at this point in time.
Yes.
Am I correct that that beautiful round window will no longer be visible from the hall?
There is, above that, there's a huge skylight that would be visible, but the huge round window, that is correct, would not be visible.
That's unfortunate.
Excuse me?
I like that window.
So, the last time we did it, we covered up a round window, the other, the opposite end.
Correct.
So it's visible from the outside, but no longer from the inside. Okay, thank you.
Questions? $2,500, what line item will this come out of? Is it the maintenance? The meeting of June 19th, and it was a while ago, but hopefully everyone had a chance to review those.
Move approval.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain? 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Palladino?
Yes.
Moving on to request to construct-
Right.
Other comments or questions? Nicole, do you have a comment on it?
Yes, she did.
Did you use the other workstation? The workstations are for the teachers?
For staff.
Yep.
I mean, I liked the windows, but if it makes more use of the workspace for teachers, I think it makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
What are you going to do with the workstation now, with the department offices now? Those are still maintained? There's not going to be department offices, it's just going to be workspace?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
English and Social Studies used to have a, an office there on the second floor.
Correct.
Is, is that what you've got now? Is that their office?
That is their office. It's not a works, it's a workstation.
So are you using that facility for something else?
So the area in the front on the second floor, that's for teachers to do their, whether it be power school, to do their copying, to do their lesson planning.
So you have two work areas?
The department head's office isn't a work area.
Oh, all right. That's just for them?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not for the teachers?
Correct.
All right.
Other questions? All right, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Anything else? Can you have something?
Is the motion for approval for him to go forward and get a bid? Does, does that have to be voted on?
No, I think it's for approval of the workstation, not for approval to go, I mean, yes, he's had to then go for the bid, but-
That doesn't have to come back to us.
Right. Yes.
Maybe it's my brother, the architect, who has had influence on me. I, I'm, I'm going to approve this, but I do it with great reluctance. I think the, the light, the architecture that that represents in the school, I'm sure someone built that with great pride, and we are eliminating that from the environment for the students and the faculty. And while I know the space is going to be put to better use, I am, I am saddened that we feel it's necessary to do so.
But remember, we're closing a window but opening new doors.
Oh, God.
I'm just wondering if your brother, the architect, would come and give us some free advice on other ways to be able to use all of our buildings in our district.
If he, if he was local, I'm sure he would. He's in Boulder, Colorado.
Let's vote.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? 5-0-0. Great. So moving on, Scott, are you going to stay there and talk about the acceptance of the foreign exchange student?
Sure.
Great. And are we moving on this? Thank you.
We have a request from a local family that has housed many of our foreign exchange students from Germany, and they have a request, and it's, it's a preliminary request. I believe at last talk, we were not 100% sure or certain if they would be at Wareham High School, but I believe we are on the agenda to approve if all the paperwork is in order, and the young lady is looking for a school. She'd be, she would like to reside in Wareham and attend Wareham High School, but it is not, we're not 100% certain that she will be at Wareham High School for the start of the school year. But they're asking for approval so that they can get going on their paperwork and possibly be enrolled in September. And I'm not sure if anything has changed since my last conversation, but Mr. Swep, you know, some more information on that.
Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, questions?
Just, just an update. I, I agree with Scott that it's, it's still somewhat up in the air, having nothing to do with Wareham High School, but having to do with the fact that the family that has brought in so many of the exchange students no longer has teenagers in their family, and it may not be the best environment, and so they, they may be looking for a different environment for the student at home, not because they don't want to come to Wareham High School. So it's, it's up in the air, but I appreciate your, your moving on this.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Yes?
Well, I didn't have any questions until Jeff just spoke, and that gives me a question. So, I don't, just for point of clarity, if, if we approve this this evening, and for whatever reason, the town decides that this, this student would be better off housed in some other district with some other family, what either legal or, legal implications or implications with his firm, with his outfit, are we responsible for? Because we're ultimately approving it. So if they choose not to be, if, if they choose that this student is not going to be housed in Wareham, is, are we responsible for anything at all?
Because of the program they're going through, they handle all the paperwork with, with Homeland Security, there'd have to be modifications on all their applications if for some reason the student didn't reside in Wareham. We'll probably know more in two weeks as far as where she'll be enrolling, and I certainly can forward that to Shaver-Hood if-
Well, I guess, I guess the part, I guess I'll come right out and ask. The question for me is, are we being used to get this child into the United States as a foreign exchange student for her to go somewhere else?
I don't think we're being used. I, I think the family feels that they'd be a last resort. They feel bad because what they like to have is to get that, the teenage, they like to have teenagers in their home that they're going to be residing in, and unfortunately, these folks have teenagers, but they reside in boarding schools. And so what they, what they like to do is try and line them up in Wareham with a family that might have some teenagers. So it's still 50/50 at this point.
Is this, is this the same application we talked about in the spring?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we doing anything to promote or look for other families that might want to host, or is that really just up to the company and to do any kind of promotion or any kind of communication in the town of Wareham saying that this is an opportunity?
There's been a lot of promotion from the organization. There's been, I've seen in the newspaper, they've had press releases looking for families. Where, we have Mr. St. Julian, who's going to be working hard this year as part of the global education team to try and work with an organization that's going to bring in some students that would bring in tuition as well. So he's, he's working on that as we speak, and so there'll be a little more of a promotion, if you will, next year, once we have the tuition tied into all of these foreign exchange students.
Any other questions or comments?
So you support this move?
I do.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? 5-0-0. Thank you very much.
I'm sure.
Good night. Two for two.
Yes.
While we have Mr. Palladino.
Mr. Palladino, one moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to bring this up under good news.
I saw you were going to get out of here, didn't you?
I was going to bring this up under good news, and I noticed Mr. Palladino was going to speak soon, and I was wondering if you could maybe elaborate a bit on, on the, the, the high school roof and how that's been proceeding.
Sure, sure. Well, I think it's been proceeding quite well. I was pretty ecstatic when I got a phone call, phone call from Chris, actually, from the Standard Times on Thursday. He received a press release before I had any paperwork that the Mass State Building, a school building authority had approved our statement of interest. So we're very excited about prospects of eventually having a, a new roof on the high school. There's a lot of work that has to happen between now and town meeting, but we're excited to be one of three school districts in the state out of, from what I understand, quite a few that have applied. So we're, we're excited, but we've got a lot of work to do moving forward, and hopefully we'll be there in, in the fall.
And how much would it save us if we go, if we go this route?
In regards to reimbursement?
Yes.
Reimbursement rate was set at 68%, so we'd be responsible for 32%.
Of the whole roof?
Of the whole roof. So it's, that, that reimbursement rate is, is pretty high when you compare to some of the other towns that are building and the reimbursement rate that they're receiving.
Yeah. That is great news.
32 cent dollars.
32 cents a dollar. And we're hoping that maybe the timing will work out like it did with the gymnasium roof, where we can get the project in well under our, our estimates.
And what, what needs to be done before that? You said there's a lot of work that needs to be done?
Sure, there's a lot of paperwork that needs to be done. There's obviously plans that need to be created, working with the state building authority, and there's just a lot of paperwork, and then at the, at the culmination, it would be the approval from town meeting as well to support this, and then beyond that, the state has to approve it after that, once town meeting has, has voted to support it. So there's a, still a lot of hoops to jump through, but certainly there were only three districts that were, that were chosen, so we're one of the three, and we're, we're very excited to be here at this point in time, to still be in the game.
Yeah, that, that's great. Thank you.
Yes.
But just to be clear, that 32% would represent approximately how many dollars?
It would be, my, based on estimates that are a few years old, it would be approximately $380,000.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Thank you.
Well, we haven't met in so long, and I read, I read that in the news. I was like, I didn't even know about this.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to recommendations for school transportation.
Thank you very much. My recommendation to the committee would be-
Mr. Shaver-Hood?
Oh, sure. My recommendations would be to purchase cameras for each bus. It would be a cost of $12,000, and then also several, two monitors that would be rotated throughout the bus fleet, depending on if there were issues on one bus, the monitor then would be assigned. This would cost $6,500. This would come out of the revolving transportation line, and I know that Michael has been doing some work and would have, be happy to fill in.
Before that, sorry, Michael, can you just give a little bit of background from, either I can do it or you can do it, about our last meeting and the discussion there and the reason why we are making this recommendation going into this school year?
Be happy to. The discussion started, if it was a two-tier or three-tier, and please correct me if I'm wrong, since I'm on day five, but, and how we were going to address moving fifth graders to the middle school. When you looked at the three-tier, it would change times, start times, it would also change bus routes, and given the time of school year, it seemed a very daunting task to reschedule to go with three tiers. However, in response to concerns expressed by parents, we certainly anticipate that we're going to be very proactive. And when you look at the cost factor as well, placing monitors on every bus, the validity of every bus is, is questionable. That way, if we have floating monitors, we feel like we can monitor the bus routes that we need to. The cameras then will also record any problems or any situations that we need to investigate. And that's how we really come to the recommendation.
Right. And just to add on to that, so to explain to the public, the three-tier system that we talked about, so there is, the vote was taken to move the fifth graders from the elementary school to the middle school. Main reason was because of overcrowding at the schools and also what was in the best interests of the, of the fifth graders. The vote was taken, they were moved to the fifth grade. We did an open meeting, or a public meeting, where we talked about that move and allowed parents to come and talk directly to the school- parents to come and talk directly to the school committee and express any concerns that they had. One of the things that came out of it was today, in our two-tiered system, the middle schoolers and the high school scholar, the middle school and high school students both ride on the same bus. And so there was concerns from some parents that fifth grade students on the bus with high school students, that's where their concerns were. We explored a three-tiered system. I think the superintendent walked through what some of our concerns were about keeping that three-tiered system. There were cost savings found, and so we were able to keep the two-tiered system, which on the positive side of all of this, every student that wants transportation will get transportation. If you don't remember, a three-tiered system, we would have to eliminate transportation for students that lived within a mile of the middle school and two miles, I think, from the high school. And it was roughly around 160 children that would no longer receive transportation. Staying within the two-tiered system allows us to transport any student that would want transportation. But to address the concerns that some of the parents had regarding that two-tiered system and fifth graders on the same bus as high schoolers, that's where this recommendation is. So if you don't mind, just one more time with that kind of background, again, talk about the recommendation.
Sure. The recommendation would be to purchase cameras that would record both audio and video. They'll be placed on every bus. We would also hire bus monitors too, and they would be randomly riding various buses. Again, if we have a bus route that is causing some concern, we would place the monitor on that route, and they would be full-time. As well, what we're going to be doing, in a letter will go out to parents tomorrow, just sharing this, should the committee approve the decision or the recommendation, students will be seated according to grade level, so fifth graders will be in front, and then you'll work your way back. As well, we'll be working with our administrators, going over the bus conduct forms, making sure that they're enforced. If there are any issues, then our administrators will be handling the student conduct efficiently and effectively and promptly. As well, we're in the process of upgrading our district website, and we're going to be having a small icon placed on every school website, as well as a district site, and it will say, "Report bus safety concerns." It's anonymous reporting, it goes directly to me, and then I will forward it to the appropriate school, the appropriate administrator to deal with. So we feel like we've given various options, and we've addressed the concerns, and of course, if you have additional concerns, please contact the building principal. We'd be very happy to sit down and answer any questions.
Thank you. Before I open it up to questions and comments that you might have, I just want everyone to be clear on what we will be, if the committee chooses to take a vote tonight, what we would be voting on. And that is not going, not the three-tier or two-tiered system, but the recommendation to transfer money out of the revolving account for the purchase of cameras, as well as the revolving monitors that will be on those buses. So I'll open up to questions and comments that the committee might have.
Well, I think this is a great idea, and if we have the money to do it, naturally we should do it. Some, you know, some people think that it's a right to ride the buses, it's a privilege. It's a privilege, and we have to have concern for the safety of our bus drivers, as well as the kids that ride the bus, because there are some situations that I'm aware of that are totally unacceptable, and we have to deal with them this year, making sure that our bus drivers feel safe and the kids. And this is a step in the right direction, especially the audio part, which is important, because then, I'm assuming that it's going to be a good enough audio signal that someone in the back of the bus can be picked up as easily as someone in the front of the bus. And Jeff Tatro is not here to answer this, but do they have classes or anything at the start of every school year to refresh the course for the bus drivers on discipline and things like that?
Yes.
And that's important.
Yes.
So Jeff has ridden the bus, or ridden, rode the bus.
He's a volunteer bus driver, so have you gone through training?
It's actually coming up on August 22nd.
Okay.
And these, naturally, will be an advertisement for monitors. Do they require any type of driver's license, even though they're not driving? Say something happened and they had to replace a bus driver? Or does Mr. Tatro come out and take over that bus? How does that work if a situation were to arise?
Are you two, do you want to answer it or do you want?
Right now, no, there's no license requirement, and yes, he would come, or we would send someone out to take the bus.
Do you want to add to that, Jeff?
But they are cored.
Absolutely.
Correct. All right. So if an incident happens on the bus, am I assuming that Mr. Tatro would be the first one to review the video, audio? And does that go to you or to the building principals that, where the children were being bused to or from?
It would go to the building principal to review.
And the building principal would handle any discipline? And if there's any type of appeal, then it would go to the superintendent?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Other questions?
Do we need to vote to transfer money if it's for bus-related stuff, like cameras?
I think that it was, in our last discussion, it was something that this committee wanted to weigh in on. I don't have to take a vote on it, but I thought that I would entertain it for this committee, because this has been something that has been going back and forth a lot, so.
I think Michael has something to say.
Well, just a one point is that the cost of the cameras will come from the revolving account, but the monitors will come from the regular transport payable account.
Okay. No, thanks for that. Yes?
I agree with Mike. The free use of the revolver, as long as it's under 25, I think, whatever the number is, has always been at the discretion of the superintendent, as long as it was for transportation purposes. And the use of monitors out of the operating account is standard operating procedure. There's always been a certain number of monitors that have floated in and out on an as necessary basis. So if you want to take a vote, that's fine, but I think we don't have to take a vote unless you feel it's, unless you feel you want to.
No, that's why I said in the very beginning, if the committee felt that it was necessary. Other comments and questions?
You narrowed this down to discussing just monitor, well, cameras and monitors, but is there any discussion on the three-tier or two-tier?
I'm happy to open that up to discussion, sure.
May I?
Yes.
Staying with the two-tier, I don't know who can answer this, if Jeff's not here, maybe Michael, maybe Mr. Swett. How much money do we anticipate there being left to buy new buses?
First, Michael, do you want to?
Well, do you, from the start of the year or the end of the year?
By the end of the year, how many new buses can we buy, is what I want to know.
Well, so currently, there's currently $150,000 a year marked in the account.
In convert, yes.
Yeah.
But, but... And so... How much do we anticipate having in the revolver to use for buses? I mean, if we go to town meeting and get it in convert for more?
At the end of 2014, rather. Or right at the moment, there's $150,000 for buses.
Right, but there's more in the revolver, right?
There's the, slightly, there's about, there is a little more, some of that will now be used for the cameras.
Right, but there's more money coming in for the year.
That's what I mean. What do we anticipate? I mean, 225, I guess it's the usual number we figure, right? With all of the events that go on and what have you? That in addition to the 189, is there anything else? Jeff? Through you, Mr. Jeff?
Yes.
Adam Chair.
The money that, the McKinney-Vento money is also, now, there's a precedent for that money going into the revolver as well, which is why we have the 190 minus the 150 minus the $12,500 for the cameras. So that's a fair summary, as long as you include the McKinney-Vento. The only problem with the McKinney-Vento is there is some risk associated with whether, A, whether it's appropriated at the full level, and B, whether the governor will allow the full level to go through. But it is at least incremental to the 200-plus that the revolver generates. The one thing to keep in mind is that 200-plus also absorbs the operational deficit. Now, if you don't mind, one of the things that I, so to speak, think freaked this committee out was the 220,000-plus deficit, operating deficit, that occurred not last year but the prior year. So we spent all last year thinking about how we're going to cope with a $220,000 deficit. The deficit came in literally $100,000 less than that, and so, but even if it comes in $100,000 less, we're still talking about an operating deficit, and Michael, feel free to disagree with me, it's over $100,000, even if we repeat the past year. So that $100,000 also has to be subtracted from the revolver to keep things in perspective. On the other hand, and I know there's six hands, every time we replace a 98 bus, we have the good fortune of probably reducing the repair costs that the operating budget is absorbing, and that $150,000 that we have already been approved by town meeting to spend is going to replace at least two, if not three, 98 buses. So it's all relatively good news.
And thank you. But to get back to my question, I guess, we got town meeting coming up in October. We could convert more money then. I guess for the end of, for the end of this year, how many more new buses do we anticipate being able to buy at $90,000 a bus?
Well, I think, I mean, I think the transport director would like to be in a similar position at the end of this year as he is in this year, where at the start of this year, where he's got $150,000 in the budget. But like you pointed out, and as I know the transport director's pointed out to me, that a lot of these figures are, depend on, you know, he's still working out the routes for the year, depends how many students are riding the buses, how many buses he can cut and therefore save money to reduce operating deficit. So there's a lot of variables still to be determined at this point.
Okay, let me, let me...
It's a hard...
All right.
All I'm going to say is, I know that last time that we were together, that question, I think that we pushed the transportation director about getting down to a number of what kind of surplus, if any, including the revolver that we're going to find at the end of the year, and there was, there's so many variables that it's, I don't want to continue to push them into a number without, you know, really understanding what's going to be there at the end of the year.
All right. I guess, I'm trying to compare between the tier two and the tier three, and I guess are we agreed from the last workshop that we had on the 29th, that there's about $100,000 savings by going with the three-tier service? Was that the consensus of what came out of that meeting?
Savings?
$100,000 in savings.
No, I think that it was going back and forth. I know that I did hear the $100,000, but then I also heard at the end that that might not be there. So I don't think that there's consensus about the overall savings going from three-tier to three. It's not all about the money of why we're going, or why the recommendation from the transportation director and the superintendent to keep a two-tiered system instead of moving to a three-tiered system. I don't think it was all just about money.
I distinctly heard $100,000 on July 29th.
I did hear $100,000 also.
And I distinctly heard $120,000 on March 20th, and I just want this committee to be mindful of that, and that's what we're foregoing by keeping the current service.
So...
To go to a...
To keep it at two-tier.
Two-tier.
If we go three-tier, we're saving at least $100,000.
I had it backwards in my brain.
And no reduction in service. But that's what it comes down to.
Now, if we go to a three-tiered system, there was a reduction in services.
Yes, there was, yeah.
Yes.
If we're keeping it static, there's no reduction in service to forego that hundred, if we forego saving that $100,000. I hope that made sense.
Well, going to a three-tiered system, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm...
No, he's got the floor.
I'm done. I just wanted that point to not be lost, because that last meeting, WCTV wasn't there, and there's no, you know, so there's no video of it, and they'll probably show up on the minutes, but now that we're here, I want to make sure that the public is aware that that's exactly what's going on.
Right, but, so I'm sorry, I just, the transportation director is not here.
Right.
There's nothing in writing that basically says that not going to a, so, there's nothing in writing that basically says, or a budget that was produced that said, here is where that $100,000 is going to be saved. I think that there was discussion around it, and that could be, or even if it was said, but I haven't seen an actual budget that talks about lineups of where that $100,000 would actually be said. It was, just because, just saying that, absolutely, but I have not seen in black and white that there's going to be $100,000 savings, and I don't want the impression to be in the community that we are choosing to forego $100,000 by staying with a two-tiered system, if I haven't seen that in black and white.
It was stated at $120,000 during the presentation on March 20th. That's a matter of record, it's on the video. And now it's $100,000, but somewhere between there, that's what it is.
Okay.
And I would defer to Mr. Swett if he wants to disagree or agree on that, because I know he knows this inside and out.
If you'd like to, that's fine, I'm just, I'm turning...
I think Cliff was next, and I do have some things to say.
Cliff?
Well, I apologize to the committee for not being at the workshop meeting, but I had another meeting, and I can't be in two places at once. However, I talked to Jeff about it, I called him, because I'm kind of befuddled about the whole thing. Because my recollection is, and I haven't gone through the records, but my recollection is that this whole thing surfaced, because it was a strategy to balance the budget when we met with the board of selectmen. So to say that this was not, that this was not initiated as a budget-cutting measure is, I don't think, legitimate, because it was. Whether or not you like the two-tiered system or the three-tiered system, I think at this point in time, I'm a little confused about it, maybe Jeff can shed some light on it. But the thing that I've heard in the community, and, you know, we've got to own this, and we've got to do a better job about being transparent. What I'm hearing in the community is, here they go again, crying wolf, because we've been saying over and over again that we've underfunded our transportation department, and now all of a sudden, we find money. That causes a credibility problem for this committee. So I'm really not sure where we are right now, but it was originally proposed as a budget-cutting measure, unless I'm wrong in my thinking.
No, let me just, the reason why the three-tiered, I agree, that the reason why the three-tiered system was originally proposed was a budget, it was a cost-saving measure.
Correct.
Going from deciding not to go with a three-tiered system, I don't think that that decision was made.
Well, I wasn't there. I don't remember that decision being made. When was that decision made? I don't remember that decision being made.
It wasn't presented to this committee.
Okay.
Well, and also, that from my recollection, my understanding is that we were presented with, here are options for cost savings, for cost savings when it comes to non-net and net. So again, one was around transportation, the other one was about administration, ILS, there was this, all kinds of things that were...
There was a litany.
Right, there was...
There was a litany of things, okay? And that got presented on a piece of paper to the budgets committee, and they came up with a number that got presented at the town meeting. And that was part of that, along with realignment and administration and a whole lot of things. So I don't remember ever voting on, to be quite honest with you, I don't remember ever voting on any tiered system. But there is a de facto, in my opinion, there is a de facto vote, because we accepted that cost-reduction strategy.
We accepted the number. We didn't...
Correct.
We did not, right. And what we voted on...
Well, that was the only strategy that got presented to us.
I need to...
Sure.
Go on.
If I was watching this, I would be incredibly confused, so let me...
I'm confused.
So let me see if I can shed some light on this situation as quickly as possible. While I was chair, this was discussed at great length, and as I said earlier, the impetus for this discussion was the $226,000... for this discussion was the 226,000-dollar deficit that we ran in the operating budget for not last year but the prior year. And the fact that we had to use school-choice funds in order to balance the whole situation because of that 226,000-dollar budget deficit. Nevertheless, as chair, I was never able to get any member to, to make a motion to go to three tiers. And so when I left as chair, the status quo was in place. Now, without putting words in the mouths of my fellow committee members, I think there was still the hope that the amount of money that we wanted to spend, as reflected in the budget, before we did this grand compromise with the board of selectmen, might be approved. It was a faint hope, but it was a hope, and we didn't want to go to three-tier if we still had that opportunity. The public should understand that this committee does a lot of things that are cost more than they have to. We could cut lots of things out of the school budget, the LEA, the transportation, we could say you have to be outside of two miles to get transportation, we could do a lot of things to save money. That doesn't make it the best thing. So this committee felt that denying service to over 130, or whatever the number was, extending the miles out, was something they didn't want to do, for a variety of reasons. I certainly won't speculate as to each individual's members' thoughts on that, but that was going to be something that the three-tier would create. I can speak for myself in saying, in a situation where we were facing the potential for another 200,000-plus deficit, if we had to do it, I could have voted for it, but I was uncomfortable with the fact that the slightest hiccup in providing that service in three tiers would have created lots more hours for our drivers and lots of unanticipated consequences, one snowstorm, and all of a sudden these buses that are running around the district, trying to do three runs instead of two runs, it, I just had this vision of bad things happening because there was no flexibility whatsoever in the schedule. Nevertheless, we never had a motion to go to three tiers. No one ever made it. Now, what happened over, during that three-month period? It stopped being discussed when, and now I am putting words in Dr. Vinovich's mouth, when he realized that the deficit wasn't going to be anything close to 220,000, in fact, it was gonna be more like 120,000. That was $100,000 savings. Then we got feedback that over 200 children were not going to be needing service because their parents said, "Don't pick my children up." That survey was not available to us until very late in the game, and that meant that we had a smaller deficit, and we could continue to reduce the number of buses necessary and still do two-tiered. Now, putting aside whether it's too late to go to three-tier instead of two-tier, if I was sitting here today on March 20th, or whenever, pick a date, way in the past, and had all the facts that I now have with respect to how many students we have to transport, how much money we have to spend, the fact that we'd have $189,000 sitting in, as of June 30th, in the revolving account, the fact that we've got three more buses that will reduce the number of 98s, and therefore perhaps even reduce further the repair costs in the operating budget, if I was sitting with all of that information, knowing how uncomfortable I was with the three tiers because of the lack of flexibility associated with, with doing three tiers in such, in the same amount of time essentially as we're doing tier, two tiers, I would be supporting two tiers. And I think our, I think our new superintendent did an outstanding job in the letter to parents dated August 8th-
Tomorrow.
Uh, tomorrow, which lays out all the things that she's going to do to make sure that the fifth grade, 12th grade issue is handled well, and why we are continuing with two tiers, independent of the fact that we could have gone to three tiers. Yes, Mike, you're 100% right, we could have saved and could still save perhaps $100,000, but there is a cost-benefit analysis to that savings, and we are not asking the public for more money to do, to, to, to stay in two-tier. We're accepting the amount of money we got, and we are still going to be updating our fleet. Would we theoretically be able to use that $100,000 to buy even more buses? Yes, but our transportation manager is getting so much more comfortable with his fleet as a result of the fact, fact that he's getting rid of, I think this 150,000, maybe the next batch that will be generated, will literally eliminate all the 98s, which are his biggest bane of existence because of the repair costs. I've gone on and on. The bottom line is, there really isn't a dispute on the facts. There is, there has been a lack of decisiveness on this committee, as I said at the workshop, but that doesn't mean we have made the wrong decision, and I'm comfortable, for a whole lot of reasons that I've already stated, that we're doing the right thing in supporting the children of Wareham and the efforts on our new superintendent's part to maximize the educational benefits to the students.
No? Yes.
No, you, you, you didn't put words in my mouth, anyone's-
You did?
Didn't, didn't.
Thank you.
I don't think you did, but I do want to clarify that it wasn't that it's necessarily, you know, for or against three-tier or two-tier, it was a matter of what town meeting came up with, I wanted in the lap of town meeting. If it was 1.6, it was status quo, if it was 1.4, as Dr. Sylvia sort of, sort of points out, I think we thought it was automatic, it was gonna go to this, that was the whole point of this whole discussion, and there wasn't a vote, and the reason why there wasn't a vote was because Dr. Vinovich withdrew his motion, well, his, his recommendation. And so, and so, I mean, we, we could have voted on it then, and like, and I'm glad you said what you said about, you know, later on, the discussion, the discussion stopped when he, when he decided to stop it, really, really, I mean, I know he's not here, and I'd say it if he was here. And, and you weren't at the July 29th meeting, but you were kinda there in spirit because you brought up a lot of the points that I, that I made, where the credibility issue, and, you know, it's, the, the town, the town is cutting back like crazy, there's no, there's no trash, there's, there's no, they're barely keeping the library open.
Well, there's trash all over.
Yeah, there's no trash barrels, there's no trash barrels. And anyway, but, but we have an opportunity here to, 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 to save 100, $100,000, and, and when I brought up at our last meeting, I said, you know, what do you think, you know, I said the FinCon would think about that, what, you know, I should add right now, what do you think the board of selectmen's gonna think about that, what do you think the TA's gonna think about that? What I'm saying is if, if we've gone this route, don't be surprised if next year it's 1.3. Okay, okay, school committee, you can make it work, work with $100,000 less, here, it's 1.3 next year. Thank you, thank you for your hard work, and you're not gonna show, no, no added buses. So that's, that's, that's my frustration, that's where I'm coming from, and I thank Cliff and Dr. Sylvia for saying what he said, I didn't expect it, but I appreciate it. But, I mean, it's kinda moot at this point. I mean, I wish, I wish that it was brought up sooner than this, and-
Just a quick-
Okay.
And I'll just end it there.
Just a quick point, I, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna spend money on our kids, and, you know, I, I don't, I, I think that this is a great idea, I think that the safety of our children has to come first, above everything else. And for the record, I was always lukewarm on a three-tiered system, I didn't want it to begin with, but, and I was vocal about it, and it was not primarily about money for me, it was about lack, about the disruption in service, and the length that fifth graders are gonna be walking, and, and lack of sidewalks, and it was more of a safety issue for me, and not being able to provide the level of service that we would provide. So, you know, so I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, with a two-tiered system from that perspective, but my only comments were, because I didn't quite understand it, and Jeff, thank you for, I understand it much better now, but, you know, the, the thing of it is, is that we've gotta really, you know, if we've got, if we've got the extra, extra funds, or if we were gonna use our revolving funds, certainly we'd wanna take the, the safety issue and put it right at the forefront, so I don't have a problem with this proposal at all, as far as this proposal, this proposal is concerned. My, my only confusion was that, and I, and I think that the more we, you know, the more we talk about it and try to explain it, and try to get folks to understand that, you know, it's not, it's not a, a pure science, trying to figure out, you know, what we're gonna have left, and how much money's gonna be there, and how many buses we're gonna get, and, and, you know, your crystal ball's in front of you, it's, it's just, it's not a, a pure science, but, you know, we do the best we can to try to figure it out, but we've gotta, we've gotta have discussions about this, and, you know, if there's any, any potential at all, that either we're gonna be shot, have a budget deficit, or if there's gonna be additional funds, that, that, that discussion has to be right out there in the forefront, so that we don't get accused of hiding stuff and, and not being, not being transparent, and, and here we go again, crying wolf. And I, and I think, I'd not say that that is the case, but perception is reality for a lot of folks at town.
I agree. And just, the one thing that I'll add to that is, is we have to look forward at this budget cycle, and to, I think that it was said at the 29th meeting, that when it comes to school transportation, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like next year, and so, yes, we were able to continue the same level of services for this year, but that doesn't mean that next year, that we don't, that we wouldn't have the same discussion and, well, I'm sure we'll be having the same discussion, and, and discussing where we need to add services. So, but going into this year, I, I have confidence that, that when recommendations come to the table, that we have a, we've had debates on them in the past, but there has to be something definitively one way or the other, instead of communicating something here at this table about cutting services, not cutting services, and then all of a sudden going back on that and saying, oh, look, we found this, this pool, I agree with you on that, and that's why it's important to be able to make sure that when we're talking about recommendations and cuts, that there is, there is a clear decision-making path, and that we close the loop on that if something is changed, and how that affects the recommendations that are coming from our superintendent and from our administrators. Yes?
Do we have to move on this recommendation?
No.
No? Okay.
I, I just wanted to be clear, this was not found money. We simply ran the department, and kudos to Jeff and his staff-
Correct.
-that much more efficiently-
Correct.
-than we anticipated when we had this, started this initial discussion. So to call it found money, I think is wrong, and we should be applauding the fact that the transportation department reduced a 220,000, $26,000 deficit down to 121,000.
I agree.
That, to me, is good news.
I agree.
And it gave us the flexibility to do something that we really wanted to do, which was maintain the level of service that we have today.
Anything further?
No, I agree.
Just, just a question, because I wasn't here at the time, and I know that this is a rel-, it was a relatively new policy to, to bus all, every, virtually everybody, but it's my understanding that three, three years ago, that, that's when the policy came on board, when they started busing the Oakdale and West communities, is that true, Mr. Fons?
Was it three years ago, it was before I got on the committee?
Yeah, it was over that, but that was my recommendation that all the kids should be bused-
Right.
-because of safety issues.
But what did they do before that? Did, did they, did they walk, did they drive, how, how, I mean, I didn't hear about anything.
A previous school committee, there was a reduction in the routes, and the Oakdale kids and-
Woods.
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 Yeah, the Woods of Wareham had to walk, and that was my concern to the previous transportation director, and Mr. Tetrault was, I asked during intimate weather, would you pick up those kids, and there was not a definite yes, so I have a problem with that. So when the Oakdale parents and the Woods of Wareham addressed me as a school committee member, that was their biggest concern, that their kids had to walk in the snow or whatever, whenever there was school. So, yeah, that was a change back then, and-
She answered, they walked, or their parents drove them?
But there was never, like, no one got, did anyone ever get hit, or?
Well, that's-
I don't think so, but thank God.
Now, we changed the policy before someone did get hit.
Right.
Right, I'm just, didn't know if it was-
But are we gonna wait for someone to get hit?
No, no.
Because that $100,000 savings would be gone in one lawsuit. So I will never support-
No, 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 I don't want to get into a debate, no, I, I, I want to stop this conversation now, because we're going back way too many years, and it, it doesn't affect our, the budget cycle going into future years, as well as our discussion on future years, this is going back, so I want to end the conversation here, unless there's anything that we're burning to talk about.
Nope.
All right, thanks, everyone, for that discussion.
I'd like to thank the superintendent for a good job on this.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. All right, so moving on to the next agenda item, acceptance of gifts.
Thank you. I would like to ask the committee to accept the following gifts, they're going to mine it for a school, $486.72 from Stop &amp; Shop, $100 from AD Make Peace, $500 from Narrow Crossing Restaurant.
Hold on just one second, we usually take these one at a time, correct?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I'll take a, a motion to approve $486.72 from Stop &amp; Shop.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0, thank you.
Great. $100 from AD Make Peace.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, thank you very much, Stop &amp; Shop and AD Make Peace, next.
$500 from Narrow's Crossing Restaurant.
Ooh, acceptance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0, thank you, Narrow's Crossing.
$237.06 from Red Robin.
Used for the grade four Big Shebang program.
Move acceptance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, you guys just be the dynamic door, okay? And lastly?
$544.87 from Red Robin to the fourth-grade yearbook.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0, thank you very much, Red Robin, and to everyone that donated to our schools.
Thank you very much.
All right, so moving on to the superintendent's report.
Well, I am sorry to say I have very little to report at this time.
Yeah, I'd say five.
You've been here five days.
I know, other than I-
Unacceptable.
I'm having meetings, I certainly would invite the-
It's not 10 o'clock yet.
Participants to please contact me, I would love to meet with members of the community, and I just, I've, I've just been so welcomed, and I'm, I feel very fortunate to be here, so thank you.
Great.
One question, has Dr. Sylvia been able to tweet you?
Oh, no.
She has a Twitter account, and Facebook, and Myspace, and your space, and his space, this is all the things that-
Look at that face.
We're reaching out to the community.
Sounds vulgar.
Just along those, not along those lines, but-
Like the cartoon Tweety Bird?
No, we'll, we'll teach you about that. I had a chance to talk to the superintendent, we had, we had a, a discussion, just talking about, you know, my own perspective of, of the district, of the needs of this district, of going forward, of things that I would like to see, and again, I, I did that not from a chair's perspective, thinking, speaking for the committee, but from my own individual school committee participation. I would encourage, if you haven't already done so, to do the same with the superintendent, so if you can, find some time in your schedule, sit down one-on-one, it really just gives her an opportunity to hear from each one of us individually around the things that, that you have seen, some concerns that maybe you've had in the past, or even some positives that you had in the past, and really what your hopes and goals are going into this school year, as well as future years within the district. So if you haven't done that, please do so. Great. Yes?
And throughout, throughout the interview process with the superintendent, I know she is very active in the community, so I hope, first of all, welcome to my town of Onset.
Thank you.
It's great to have you, but also on behalf of Wareham and Oakdale and West Wareham and everyone else, but Saturday's a good take for the onset Cape Verdean festival that averages about 20,000 people, so that's a good time to get out. Dr. Vinovich used to, what was it, serve linguisa sandwiches, Dr. Sylvia, and get out and, and talk to people, so it's, it's a good take, and love to see you out there.
Thank you.
She's already in the dunk tank.
In the dunk tank?
Yeah. You didn't know?
No.
Okay.
That doesn't seem befitting her station.
No. All right, thank you, anything else?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right, great. School committee reports, all, are there any reports from the committee? One thing that I still haven't done yet- One thing that I still haven't done yet, but I will, but I need to sit down with the superintendent. In the past, we have had, not subcommittees, but advisory committees. And they have ranged from, I mean, we have a budget advisory committee, we have, we had a community relations, we had a safety committee. What I'd like to do is sit down with the superintendent and find out from her perspective what would be useful when it comes to any committees that we, or subcommittees or advisory committees that we pulled together from this group. One idea was to have an advisory committee that focuses on one of the district goals. So, whether it's technology that you'd be in charge of, the technology goal.
Hey, I'm right up there on technology now.
Curriculum and instruction about rigorous curriculum instruction, but really focusing them around those. But that's something that we'll sit down with, and then I'll come back to the committee and present them to you, and then assign, if possible, folks to be part of advisory committees.
I want technology.
Okay, good. The other piece that I just wanted to update the committee on is the budget. We discussed this a little bit on the 29th, around budget planning discussions with the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. I sent an email to the Chair of the FinCom, and also the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, asking for their availability next week or the week after the 19th, to sit down with the superintendent, the town administrator, the business manager, our business manager, as well as the town accountant, and the three board chairs, to hear from them, again, because we talked about all coming together as a FinCom and a Board of Selectmen, and I think there were some concerns about having 92 people in a room without any formal agenda. Really pulling that group together to discuss and hear from the TA and the superintendent, specifically around things that would be helpful to them as we meet as a board. I'll be prepared, hopefully I'll hear back from them, and before our next meeting, I'll meet with them, and then be able to report back out to the board and talk about next steps. But the goal is, and what came out of our last budget discussions with the Board of Selectmen, was we need to continue that momentum and start the discussions on the budget much, much sooner than we have in the past, and talk about cost savings, as well as communicating to each other about where we see some of the challenges within our budgets. Yes?
Last year, I'm asking if we're going to do it this year, but last year around this time, we had a discussion on the fair years, closing of the LEA budget and the line...
I'm sorry, it's a new system.
Items and such. Are we going to have a discussion on that?
Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, you can do that.
Thanks.
All right, so just working on, and we'll discuss on agenda that should be on. Okay, sure. Any other school committee reports? Okay, so we'll move on to any other business. Is there any other business that the committee has tonight? Yes?
We are going to get a report on athletics.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes?
Just, a template was forwarded to the athletic director for his use, so we wouldn't have some of the issues that we had with the last report.
Do you remember the last time that we were together? There was, every single time that we received the report, it was in a different format, there was all different kinds of data.
That's fine.
Okay. So, and I also let Michael know that, so hopefully he's going to get that from there. And so, if there's any changes that he would like to make to the report also.
So, the report is going to go to Michael before it comes to us?
Well, I think that it's important from...
That's fine.
Yeah, if you could send that template to Michael, too, that would be great.
I was, maybe we could have a brief meeting to talk about it.
Okay. Any other business? Okay?
Move, adjourn.
Well, nope. So, now we need...
I tried!
We need to go into executive session to review the minutes of the meetings of March 20th, April 10th, April 25th, May 4th, May 28th, and June 12th, so then we can discuss releasing those minutes. So, what I'd like to do, if possible, is have everyone, have the school committee stay here, ask everyone to leave, sorry. And what we will do is we'll be coming out of executive session just to adjourn. Okay?
And release the minutes.
And release the minutes. Great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Do we have to vote to go into executive session?
I'll take a mo... Oh, yes.
This is the program. You can have it.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, you guys. Should I take a motion, or wait till everybody leaves?
You have to take a motion, and then you should have to take... You proposed a motion to go into executive session, you just announced it, but you didn't.
Okay. I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
You have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Ken?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Maybe. Yes.
Yes.
We are now in executive session.
Sorry, Nicole.
That's fun.
The power of the chair.
We will be releasing the minutes of February 13th, March 20th, April 25th, May 4th, May 28th, and June 12th. I said February 13th first. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.